Good evening, everybody, and thank you for joining us tonight for the Board of Education meeting. Before we start the formal meeting, I just wanted to let you guys know if you have public comment cards, they can go in the box on the front of the stage. After our public comment starts, we won't be accepting any public comment cards until the second call for public comment. So please make sure if you'd like to speak during the first call that you have your cards in the box. Also, before we start the meeting tonight, we would like to take a moment and recognize the tragic events that happened in Oxford over the last week. So if you will all who are able, please stand and join us in a moment of silence for the Oxford Community Schools family, for those who died or injured last Tuesday, for the Oxford staff, the board, and volunteers, and for the first responders and the dispatchers who took dozens of nine-one-ones calls that day. I will now call the meeting to order. Roll call, Lori.
Julia Ah.
Here.
Linda Baker.
Here.
Melissa Bliss.
Here.
Paul Cooper.
Yes.
Kevin Hamilton.
Here.
Ben Carley.
Here.
Erin Noah.
Here. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, before I get approval of the agenda, I have one proposed change to the agenda. Following editor number seven, our closed session, I'd like to insert a discussion regarding classroom displays, including the pride flag, so that will occur after our closed session discussion. When we come back, I'll need to open. Any comments or questions on the agenda for tonight? There being none, I need a motion to approve. Second. Roll call, Lori.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yeah.
Melissa Bliss.
Yeah.
Paul Cooper.
Yes.
Kevin Hamilton.
Yes.
Ben Carley.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Yes. Okay, next is our first call for public comment. I want to give just a couple reminders to those of you that are giving a public comment tonight. Everyone will be limited to three minutes. Mr. Carley will have the timer going. When you hear the timer go off, please kindly end your statement and allow for the next person to come up for public comment. Mr. Carley will call you up by name, and you can step to one of the two mics in the front here. Also, everyone is free to speak one time for offering a public comment, so that means if you speak once during the first offering, please wait for the second offering if you would like to speak again. The board and Mrs. Mash will not be answering questions or engaging in dialogue with speakers. If you have a direct question that you would like an answer to, Mr. Carley will make a note on your public comment card, and Mrs. Nash will get back with you. Also, just a reminder, any comments, they need to be not personally directed, abusive, or obscene, or we will stop the public comment portion of our meeting for tonight. And with that, I will hand it over to Mr. Carley.
Are there any other... Do you want to mention the second round of public comments as well?
Yeah, yeah, so there will be a second round of public comment towards the end of the meeting.
Marshall Kilgore. Marshall also has a timer for the speaker.
Hi. Sorry about that. I just found the instructions as I was getting the public comment form outside. So good evening, everyone. My name is Marshall Kilgore. I serve as the Director of Admin at Outfront County Zoo. Our organization serves thousands of LGBTQ+ Southwest Michiganers each year. On behalf of our organization and community, I stand here not only to honor educators like Russell Ball, but to also speak truth and provide a broad perspective on the recent incidents regarding the pride flag being displayed at the Three Rivers classrooms. I'm happy to die, I ran up those stairs, guys. The jobs of educators and admin have notably been more challenging during the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The work and daily lives of our students have been affected by the ongoing pandemic in multiple and the multitude of social issues inside and outside school. We also badly want to keep our communities and students safe during these challenging times. One way to provide safe and affirming learning environments is to show acceptance and affirmation. This may be through symbols, like the traditional flags. Understanding why one may want to fly a pride flag in a school is important. This relates directly to community building. It shows that we can accept those within our school community that make us different from ourselves. A pride flag within a classroom is not an equalizing statement. It shows a commitment to uplifting all students as they navigate self-discovery and acceptance. The Charter Project estimates that at least one LGBTQ+ youth between the ages of thirteen and twenty-four attempts suicide every forty-five seconds in the United States. These are our youths that educators interact with every day. A simple show of support may allow students to ask for help and lead to saving lives. We must continue to think of the bigger picture and the future of our students. This kind of messaging shows that all students, no matter who they are, are safe, accepted, and belong to Three Rivers classrooms. This kind of support relates directly to what their district currently states in its nondiscrimination policy. The River Community Schools includes both gender identity and sexual orientation in this policy, meaning that without question, messages supporting these expressions should be allowed. The current actions displayed by your mission undermine the integrity of these protections. If we allow for this kind of misstep to be accepted, we are allowing an adverse community to further become vulnerable to increased marginalization and discrimination. I encourage Three Rivers Community Schools to lead on this issue by allowing pride flags and other non-political affirming symbols of marginalized communities within their schools. These simple steps will allow for learning to take place and subsequently provide a more inclusive and affirming learning environment for all of Three Rivers students. Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and once again, I'm Marshall Kilgore from Outfront County Zoo. Thank you.
Thank you, Marshall. Emma Miller.
I am reading a letter on behalf of a Three Rivers Middle School teacher. She had submitted that she can't be here tonight, but she's a teacher at the Three Rivers Middle School. And she says, "It is my job to make sure that every student feels loved, appreciated, and safe. I can do all these things without flying a pride flag in my classroom. It is my job to make sure that students with parents that are in law enforcement feel loved, appreciated, and safe. I can do all these things without hanging a thin, blue-lined flag in my classroom. It is my job to make students with criminal records and students around them feel loved, safe, and appreciated. Appreciate it. And I can do all of these things without having a police officer in my classroom. It is my job as a teacher to teach the state's standards and to make sure every student leaves behind being a better person and student than the day before. In my five years of college preparing me for this job, I have learned ways to do this by having inclusive materials, life lesson discussions, and much, much more. In my classroom, no student will feel as if they are unsafe due to not having a flag supporting their lives. I can say the name of my fellow teachers. There is not one teacher in our building that will put up with harassment, bullying, intimidation because it is our job to keep them safe. It is insulting to us as the staff that the community feels like we can't have a safe, inclusive environment without a flag in our classroom. If a student only feels safe when there is a flag around them, then there is a bigger issue at hand, and we are not doing our part as staff. As a staff, we are more than accommodating to students who need it. For example, we have a student on his fourth name change of the year, and we comply, which we comply with, and comply with the student's request for that. I have some questions for you to ponder. If the pride flag, pardon what you did right there. If the pride flags are allowed and teachers hang them back up, what will the students think of a teacher that didn't hang one up in their classroom? Will that then be discrimination? Will that make students automatically feel unsafe in these classrooms? Are we enabling these thoughts? Wouldn't that give students a reason to think that they know, whereas we stand on this issue? Personally, I think it puts teachers in a terrible decision if this goes through because the thought process will be, they either support us by hanging a pride flag, or they may hate us because they're not showing their support. And again, that's wrote by a middle school teacher here for Three Rivers in our district.
Jerry Kirby.
Good evening. My name's Jerry, and I don't know what the very statement tonight. I wasn't really planning on speaking, but it's just gonna be really short. To kind of go back to what the teacher wrote in her letter. Where have we come to where we only feel safe when there's a symbol being hung up in the classroom? And if it takes a symbol to be hung up in a classroom for you to feel safe, then there's a bigger issue than just hanging a symbol in the classroom. But I just wanted to mention real quick that over the years, in the public school system, not just Three Rivers, there's always been a fight about keeping Christianity out. And I guess just really quick, what's the school board going to say when a Christa group wants to hang a Christa flag inside the school? Is it going to be accepted, or is it going to be fought? My personal opinion is this, I come from Three Rivers, and when did we get to the point where we're at right now? Why isn't the school system still doing the job that they did in the eighties when I went to school? Teaching the basics, English, science, math. When did we stop doing that and start pushing all these other issues? But my whole thing is, why don't we stick with the three flags that we shouldn't hang out there, that we hung out there for all these years? The Three Rivers school flag, the United States flag, and the State of Michigan flag. I believe if you go down this route, this is going to cause all kinds of problems, and I believe the school system is possibly going to build a burden, see losses. If you allow this, again, what's going to stop someone from saying, "I want to..." What if my daughter comes in and wants to, "I want to fly a Christian flag"? What if any of you wants to identify any flag? State Michigan flag? Or are you going to say yes to that? Just name it. That's all I have.
Rebecca Royce.
Hi, my name's Rebecca. I also didn't prepare anything necessarily, so I'm kind of going off of just kind of what I'm thinking right now, and that is, to respond to some of the comments that have already been made regarding having the flag in the room. What it does is it teaches queer students that they have a safe teacher that they can talk to about things they're struggling with. A lot of queer students don't have a safe home environment. A lot of their parents are not accepting. To know that they have a teacher that would have their back could save their life. And it's important to know who they can and cannot trust in the schools because, as was mentioned earlier, queer students are in a higher likelihood of suicide and other kinds of violent crimes against them for being queer. And having to have a safe environment to express that and be able to talk to a teacher about that is extremely important. On top of that, the fact that we're talking about this comparison with religion, an identity is not the same thing as a religious belief. Queerness is... Being queer is who a person is. And as a queer mother, I want to know that if my child were in a situation like this, that she would have a safe place to go to. And to compare religion to identity is a slap in the face, to be completely honest. Pride flags are not a political symbol. They are not a religious symbol. They are an expression of identity. And that is where I wanted to leave my comments. Thank you.
Rebecca Gallop.
Rebecca's in a row. Thirty-five years ago, I was in high school. I was sixteen years old. My best friend was gay. He could not connect his parents. They would have kicked him out of the house or sent him to reeducation camp. He was not comfortable talking to any of the teachers because he didn't know where they stood at. So I would drive him to Western to meet with his support group there because it was the only thing available in our area. He was a year behind me, and I graduated, and he was essentially by himself at the school. And he did try to kill himself because there was no support system. And had some teacher been comfortable and had their flag to fly, he would have had another resource of someone that he could talk to to not be so alone. And that's really the only anecdote I wanted to give tonight. Thank you.
Peyton Curle.
Hello, I am a student at Three Rivers Middle School. I'm also a part of the LGBTQ community, and I know how this has affected me in the whole. Basically, I feel safe when I know there is a flag and such a teacher I can trust when there's a flag that represents me and a bunch of other people at this school. And I know that there's different people with different opinions, and that's okay. Just as long as they don't look queer anymore. But I want a safe space because I don't really feel safe right now. With everything that's been happening, I don't have a safe space. And Mr. Ball was like a really good teacher. And I've never had him, but I know he was a really good teacher. And with his flag, I felt safe, and I felt like I could go to him. And six in total LGBTQ students report to the NCSA at school because of their sexual orientation because they have, as I said, they have no one to talk to if they don't know. They don't know how a teacher's going to react if they say, oh, if they say that they're struggling because of their sexual orientation or their gender. And it's been longer than the eighties. I know you guys were hot in the eighties, and it was a different, it was a different way. Or it was in the seventies, and it was different, but times change. Times really changing. Time is changing. It's 2021, the age is at the end of the century. And yeah, that's all I can say.
I'm here on behalf to speak as a dedicated and as a parent. And when I left for college, I was taught inclusion, inclusion, inclusion. That in classrooms, it's all about inclusion, inclusion, inclusion. I come from a Christian background, and I was with people. I thought, it's a choice. It's a choice. That's how I was raised. That's how I was brought up. And then I had a child who started questioning something from a really young age, a really young age. By the age of ten, my child was asking me, "Mom, if I married a man, would you be mad"? So everything I believed was chance. So if it was your child, you would want them to have a safe space, especially in the world we have right now. Everything that our children have known as students and as children that they're full, the world has crumbled around us. We all know the stress of COVID has brought to educators, to parents, to families. And a lot of children don't have safe homes. They don't have somewhere they can go. So school would be my second choice of where my child can feel safe and know that he has other relatives to talk to. But I will say that I have been very blessed in the fact that I can reach out to someone in the high school. I get immediate response about my child, and he does have a good support system. But there's a lot of children that don't know, it's a globalize. They don't have the skill set to reach out. They may not be taught that at home. So I just can't express enough as a parent of the community how I want my child to have that safe space to go when he is struggling with his identity. As I believe that none of the parents in the community feel the same way.
First of all, I have a compliment, and it's regarding the Oxford tragedy. And I know that has something similar occurred here. Nikki is our interim superintendent, carry out, I don't know if you're here or not. But your life dealings with both of you over the last four years, I know that the two of you would handle that in a different manner. I know that that student would have gone home. I know that authorities would have been called. And I just want to thank you both for the confidence that you've instilled over the last several years to bring us to that awareness that we can have that confidence in you. So thank you both very much. The second thing I'm going to address is Representative Peram has instituted, or said that he's going to prepare legislation to arm staff and teachers, and I would just encourage you all to do a tremendous amount of research as to whether or not that's beneficial. I haven't talked to him. I don't know where his head is at. But I'm not a believer that guns in the school is going to do anything unless we have a security guard or a police officer, someone that's been trained specifically in that manner. So I'm just planting seed in your head because I trust your heads first. Finally, I do have a comment regarding the pride flag. I'm going to steal from one of the letters to the editor. But the mission of the Three Rivers Community Schools is to educate, motivate, and inspire all students to reach their full potential, to become successful adults, and pursue their dreams. It's not a platform for staff to sell their causes to our children. Just consider the broader outcomes. And where I'm concerned about isn't the pride flag. It's that then we have the Republican flag, we have the Democratic flag. Those are identities. Then we have the Core Choice flag. Then we have the Rights Blank flag. Those are identities. So there's another way to show the safety, and perhaps that's an organization that has a teacher like Mr. Ball to be the counselor and someone that the students know that they can be able to access, and they can still have that safety, and it doesn't have to be through a flag. I feel that when, I agree that only the Michigan flag, the US flag, and the Wildcat. And I'm going to add my little add-on here with the Power Cat on it, and it just kills me. But it should be allowed with the flag. Thank you.
Good evening, board members and staff. First off, thank you for accommodating the community. Normally, two guys and four or five of us, and so this is really nice of you accommodating us to be able to give everybody a safe space to talk and COVID protocols. So I really appreciate you guys doing that and taking action on that. I want to start off and say thank you for all you do. I think this is a chance for the community to understand how this change works. An issue arises, we find out what is legal, we check the policy, and we listen to the community. And all of that takes time. We've all had things that has made us frustrated if we stand up here, and I've been one of them that says, "I want this to change, I want this to change." We get really angry, and it doesn't change quickly, but there is a process, and that's what coming to these meetings does, it teaches us that this is a process and with respect to the policy, but it gives us a chance to share our business. So thank you for doing that and all the work that comes in there because I know that there's a lot of that, you know, process that comes in there. I want to acknowledge and support all the women that are asking for change and applaud you. This is the perfect way to do it, this coming up here, coming to you guys and doing this, and bringing all those concerns here. But I actually didn't come to talk about that. On a bigger platform, tonight I came asking about our issue of safety. We all know what happened in Oakland, and it's a tragedy, but it brings awareness closer to home now. What are we doing to protect our student body? You've been asking what we can do with our ESSR funds, and we did do a survey. Why can't you use some of that money to provide, you know, metal detectors in all the schools? I know that ESSR funds can't be used for employment, but we just hired another PE teacher position, a trainer or somebody. So if we have the money to do that for an extracurricular activity, why can't you come up with money to help provide safety for the whole student body? Because that affects the whole student body, not just sports. And so I just asked that we could look into doing something to keep our entire student body and our teachers safe, and that's our basic.
Thank you guys so much for having us all here. Jerry Kirby, probably figured I'd be coming today. I wanted to address the gay pride flag issue. And I want to speak on this as an alumnus of Three Rivers High School. I graduated here in 2006. And I know a gentleman earlier spoke to, "What about the old ways? You know, how we used to teach things?" When I was in high school, I guess I graduated in 2006, even just then, fifteen years ago, the dynamic was so different than it is today. There were a lot of homophobic slurs that were used back then, and not a lot of thought went into it. I've seen some of my teachers here today in this audience, and you know, I want to say that those teachers were incredibly supportive way back then when most had the issues, but the dynamic was so much different. And you know, something as simple as a pride flag in a classroom could have changed my life. I came out at the age of twenty-nine, alright? That was a, that took me a long time. I remember being in high school, and I remember the damage that it did to me mentally that, you know, I didn't have a support system. None of us did. I don't think there was one person that was out of the closet when I... I don't think there was one person that was out of the closet when I was in school because of, you know, the, the pushback that we would have received. I came out of the closet when I was 29 years old because I had seen that the world had changed. It was moving forward, all right? And I finally had the courage to come out, long after the mental damage had hurt. All right? I went through tons of therapy, tons of anger management, tons of, you know, just a lot of psychological help. Um, and I just cannot, for the life of me, see why in year 2021, we're gonna go ahead and put our students through that again. All right? Elizabeth Praxler.
Amy Praxler.
Hi. Um, thanks for giving us this opportunity to, uh, speak. I just wanted to, I have a prepared statement, but based on some things that were said, I kind of wanted to, um, clarify that advocacy and acceptance are not the same as neutrality. So you can't be neutral in a project of a queer identity, just standing there. You just really can't do that. So, um, the first gentleman that spoke from out front comes to, uh, share a statistic with you. Um, that at least one youth aged 13 to 24 attempt suicide every four to five seconds in the United States. That's a lot. That's a lot of kids. Um, suicide is the second leading cause of death among 14 to 18-year-olds, um, second only to unintentional injuries. Um, queer students face higher rates of harassment, violence, bullying, and isolation, homelessness, parent rejection, adverse health issues such as depression, anxiety, substance use, self-harm, and suicidality, all which are significantly increased when they're intersecting identities. Um, for anybody who doesn't know what that is, that means, um, the young lady who spoke earlier, who is African-American, a member of the LGBTQ community, and a girl, faces three times the marginalization that somebody else does. That's, you know, making her life that much harder. Um, so, uh, let's see. This is a federally funded public school that is mandated to represent and protect all students, not just heterosexual ones. Forcing kids back in the closet is counter to the goals of a public school institution in 2021. And lifespan development during adolescence is a time of identity exploration and the development of independence. Unfortunately, not all students have accepting families at home. These kids often rely on supportive resources within their schools and communities to educate themselves and, um, serve as protective factors. Schools need to be a place these students can feel a sense of belonging in community. They need to find their people. Um, parents who are concerned about LGBTQ identities can address their concerns with their children at home, or they also have options for private religious education that might be more in line with their personal belief systems. Um, I do want to note that according to the Michigan ACLU, um, queer students have protected rights that aren't being enforced at the middle school. Um, I have one child at the middle school, and two in this school. And at the middle school, my child says that she hears, "That's so gay," or "You're gay," in a derogatory manner on a daily basis, within classrooms, hallways, and locker areas, and that nothing is really done.
Thank you. Gabby Glover.
Hi, um, I'm in the middle school. And I just want to say that, um, it's good to know that people are here to support you when you see that flag. Because one flag, look at the flag you're seeing, you're like, I mean, not knowing nobody's there leads to depression, and it could lead to death, and it's harmful. And, um, it's really hard, and... It's very hard. It's hard to know that nobody's there for you. And it's lucky to know that somebody is there for you, somebody is to help you. And it's kind of hard knowing that people are trying to take down those flags and they, and they avoid your pride. It's very hard. And knowing that there's a flag there that helps you to cope. And sometimes, parents don't accept what you are. And so knowing that they accept you at school is, uh, thank you.
Louie Coler, Boulder.
Um, I've lived here for 30 years. I'm, um, graduated from here in 2007. During my high school years, I've been very, very active in that high school experience. Um, despite all of that, being a gay man, I did not look around and see anything that showed me that I could be something successful. When we talk about the basics, when we talk about these subjects that are taught in school, you know, we didn't read rich and poor. We read thoughts. We didn't read stories, we read wandering heights. We saw again and again and again moments where in social studies, we would talk about the powerful civil rights movement, but we left out Marsha B. Johnson and Snowball. And it seems that there was very... A concerted effort to erase any contribution the queer community had made that might demonstrate that they can do great things. And if a flag, which was not even an option, that that would never have flown in, in my experience with the school. And the idea that we're even coming together as a community does have its own growth. But it is a little shameful that we are even trying to remove it, to give one person, even one of those students, an opportunity to feel like, yeah, someone out there is looking out, someone does believe that I can do just as much as everything else. And I'm being taught all these people that contributed to history and society. I could be one of those people too. And those are my personal experiences. But I also have my bachelor's in behavioral psychology and my master's in parenting, marriage, couple, and family therapy. And I can begin to tell you the number of studies that back up the sorts of things that are being said here tonight. The idea that people are being racist or not represented, especially in adolescence. These suicide, depression, anxiety, riskier behaviors, social isolation. These are not the, the conditions that are conducive to a proper education that can form these children into adults that then do the impact to not just this community, but our society as a whole. So I thank you for your time.
Hi, good evening. Um, my name is Stacy Roy, and I teach sixth grade science in the middle school. I also volunteer to help my eighth grader daughter run the GSA over there. Uh, one of the first things I'm going to address is the lack of consistency between the GSA and other non-curricular groups. So I'm one of the, the small group of staff members that volunteer their time to assist in GSA. We don't get a stipend, we don't turn in sign cards, and it's not tied to our contracts. My daughter had to get approval for hang-up signs for our first meeting just to advertise the room. Then we were told we had to get approval for any posters, approvals to do announcements. I'm also an advisor for another non-curricular club. I get paid a stipend that's connected to my contract. We don't get approval setting posters, put up signs, to share announcements, which are done pretty regularly, but GSA does. According to our board policy from 96, 1996, no school employer or volunteer advisors are allowed to send any meetings to participate in any way because the group is to be 100% student-run only, which is it. However, I, as well as I'm sure anyone in this room that has ever had or currently has a middle schooler, cannot possibly agree with the fact that we're gonna allow a group of students to gather with no supervision. As much as I love my middle schoolers, I can't go to the bathroom or get a drink and leave them alone. Yet we want them to be able to meet with no supervision whatsoever. She comes to me, so she's never taught a class, eighth grader, running this program. She's never taught a class. She goes to our guidance counselor, and Mr. Has to give them the material and resources that she can share. When running student council, we jump to community find opportunities, to set up agendas. We set up dances, can prove rights. We do it, the advisors. GSA can't. We have work depending on middle school students to do this themselves. The second thing I would address is the issue of pride flags. Our school district pushes that we're the district of choice. But who are we the district of choice for? Only straight students? Well, I have questions to the students that are part of the community. It says that we're not the district of choice for you. You're not welcome here. It's a space where there's a teacher and minister that supports them as a human being, and we want them to feel that they belong there. By asking everyone to take a pride flag, you've sent the message that they are not welcome. That my mom, binary child, who's in sixth grade, is not welcome. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Kenzie Rennie. I run the GSA at the middle school. I organized it, and I hold the meetings every Thursday. And I also come up with lessons plans for the kids to do. I have set up the group. I have gone to our principal to have him approve the group. I have, the only time I have never gone to him to have approved was announcements and posters, because I thought that was something I was able to have up because every other club was able to. PTO was able to have stuff up, like for super council, they could have stuff up. For other groups, basketball could have stuff up. But we were not able to unless it was approved. And permission sets, some other clubs don't have to have those. I had to have every kid have this. I had to deny kids that I could give them a safe space because they didn't have a permission set, because they didn't have a safe space. I gave them, I started the club to give them a safe space at school so they would have somewhere to go if they did not have a place at home to go. They were, my friends and my siblings are in the group. I have created bonds with some kids that I did not know at the beginning of the school year. And now I love these kids, and I will support them through thick and thin because I love these kids. They deserve as much of a safe space as anyone else does. They have the human rights to be able to be out and be LGBTQIA+ and not be shameful. Gay is used all the time by being told you're gay and being told that that is not okay to be. I, as an eighth grader, am going around school, being, hearing, or being told that I am gay. But I, I'm not, but I'm, I support people who are. But I hear people say that it's not okay to be gay because that is either a sin or it's not okay with their religion. Being, your belief and who you are are two very different things. So religion and who you are, if you are Bible and then you're Christian, two different things. Those flags are two different things. And the fact that we had to take down our flags because few people complained about it. I'm sure the clubs have gotten complaints. I'm sure they got complaints about stuff on how maybe we shouldn't have done this or this or that. But we get two complaints and we have to take down every one of our flags. We had to teach her quit. He resigned because there was no, because he did not feel safe. And then you go and tell us that all of ours have to come down? I thought for a week that I wouldn't even be able to have my group. I thought we wouldn't be able to have it because I thought that that was something I was not even gonna have because it was, oh, that's not it. It was what I always thought was gonna happen that week. I was worried for my kids' safety, that they were not gonna be able to come and feel safe.
I want to start today just again by thanking all the members of the board for all the work you've put into the, to this work. Whether any of us individually agree with you or whether I agree with any decision you make, I, I am so thankful that you all have taken on this job of being around the board through all sorts of this. Um, I am here, uh, not because I'm a member of the LGBTQIA+ community, but because I'm not, because I'm a gay, a straight, cis hetero male in this community, I have all the privilege. I'm a Christian, I call myself a Christian. Um, I, I have all the inherent privilege that this, this country gives me. And so in that, from that place, uh, it's my responsibility to be here to speak out and stand with the people who, who are not granted that privilege. If you could, if you wish. Actually, first, the GSA has to go through to do, to just function normally. Um, it's, it's the responsibility of people like me to stand aside, or not even just stand aside, but to support the people who need, um, to have their voice heard and have their, their, their self, their identity confirmed and who they are affirmed. And if that gets in the way of some of my privilege, that's fine. I don't need, I, I, people with my privilege need to give them, people that give them that often feel uncomfortable, like so many people have been forced to feel uncomfortable with who they are for so long. It's a question directly, but I just have a couple that have come to mind. Um, I would, I've tried to follow this, this situation. I'd be interested in hearing more about what exactly led to this decision in this situation. I've also been to the last few meetings, and I haven't heard any comments from anybody from the public about this situation or about this issue. So I'm intrigued, as someone who has been here commenting about other issues, if there's another way to make changes at the school, I'd be interested in knowing what that is. And I'd also be interested in knowing what a timeline for action is. I know there's, there's been conversation or, um, news, um, about a wait-and-see approach. But I'd be interested more than just wait and see what's the timeline, when is the decision to be made, and how is that process being done? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm a student at the Three Rivers Middle School. When I noticed the pride, pride flags were in the classroom, I felt like I was included. But when they took them away, I just felt very uncomfortable. It's very uncomfortable to be learning in an environment that seems like it's not inclusive of me and other members of the LGBTQ+ community. The LGBTQ+ community is not political. It's just to let us feel more comfortable in a learning environment. Ever since the pride flags have been removed, more people are picking on the kids of the LGBTQ community. With no representation, it's very hard to be comfortable in learning environments. We need to symbolize people of LGBTQ. Even when my grandmother was in school, she had an LGBTQ+ right. He was not represented, and I know it took it very hard to follow this one. We need representation for our school for more successful lives. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Burby, and I'm a registered nurse and teaching practitioner. And I am going to address this issue from a mental health and physical health viewpoint for children and youth, these students. Um, you guys have heard the statistics, and they play out over and over and over again. These students are at higher risk for all sorts of mental and physical health complications. They are statistically more bullying. Trans youth are four times more likely to be threatened or assaulted at school than their cisgender counterparts. Um, bisexual and getting lesbian immune are two times more likely to be assaulted. The bullying rate is just as high. This is not a question of a flag or a political statement. This is not a question of a flag or a political statement. Every medical organization, including the American Academy of Pediatrics, recommends putting up symbols like the pride flag in medical offices and waiting rooms so that the students and the youth and the young adults that come in know that they have a safe place to be, to know that they will be in safe hands. You guys have a grown, adult, educated teacher walk away from a job that he loves over this because it impacted him so much. How much do you think it impacts your students? Between a Christian flag and a pride flag is one major thing. One says, "All are welcome here," and one, a vocal majority, says, "You are not welcome." There is something wrong. As medical care providers, we have a responsibility for our kids to provide a safe, inclusive place for everyone. And that symbol, according to every major medical organization, speaks, "You are safe here and your kids need that."
I'd like to start off by reading a quote from Rick Warren. He's a famous speaker and author. He says, "Our goal trans is accepted two huge lies. The first is that if you disagree with someone else's lifestyle, you must fear or hate them. The second is that to love someone means you agree with everything they believe or do." Both are nonsense. You don't have to compromise conditions to be compassionate, Rick Warren says. And I just like to say I have no will towards people of this community whatsoever. I have a feel for you. I have a passion, I understand, and that they would need a safe space. But I also agree with the board and have the flags removed because there's so many other materials and flags that aren't allowed. These kids are special, but they're not more special than other kids. So it's elevating our love, you know, when you're demoralizing other kids that they can pay for whatever their religious system is. So just for the usual, I think we need to just not have anything that has a religious political or any other type of flag hanging in the classroom either. And as I was saying before with the teacher, that I had the same kind of comments, so students shouldn't have to have a flag hanging in the classroom to feel accepted or loved. That's, you know, like, we're not doing our jobs as teachers and maybe there's overtraining or something needs to be done for these teachers, but if students aren't feeling loved and accepted, because every student, all students should feel loved and accepted and not feared to go in a classroom and not feel safe in any way. There's just, we just need to do a better job if that's the case. And obviously, it's kind of a divisive conversation. Appreciate the respect everybody has had on both sides. I don't think we've had any real bad outbursts or anything, so I pay respect to the community for their, the way that we're handling this and the work and as well as the services that they're made. And then again, just that the teachers just do a better job if they're not explaining that children are being loved and we got something else that we need to do. So also, also, students should feel loved and accepted regardless of what their religious system is. So that's all I can say.
Merry Christmas. When we get down to it, we're talking about our First Amendment rights. We're talking about symbols and display. And when it comes down to it, we have five rights that are First Amendment rights. Freedom of speech, freedom of press, freedom of religion, freedom of assembly, freedom of petition, our government. That decision was made a long time ago, well, before you folks were members of the board, that certain symbols, freedom of speech would not be in a government building. That's a bit religious. I have heard a few people say, "Well, that's a belief. That's methodical." Well, I identify as a Christian, despite some of you folks identifying with your conceptual preference. You are who you are. I imply, if I'm not allowed to fly my flag, then it's all or nothing. No one gets to fly it, or everybody gets to fly it. And I think that's where your decision needs to be made. First of all, and also, I would like to commend the students that have come up and speak. It's very brave, no matter what, what your viewpoint is. And I encourage you to keep getting involved in your government. And I'd also like to thank the people that were outside protesting very peacefully, expressing their viewpoints. My viewpoint differs. I think the decision would be to allow one of them, but if we're going to allow one, we can allow all of them. Thank you for your time.
Jake Smith.
Thank you, board, for your time. I am Jake Smith. I'm the director of the federal government, in strong ties to the Free Rivers community, both economically and otherwise. And I've worked a long time in supporting gay 12 education. I did want to start off with saying that redefining a belief system or redefining political party as method of, like defining your identity, is opportunistic, marginalizing our community. We want to talk a little more about the flag like this so that we have a little more education because apparently there's a little bit lacking here. So we did want to, we started with, in 1978, Diller Baker created a pride flag as an expression or as a commemoration of the Stonewall riots that happened back in 1960s. And if you look through here, you'll see that there's no consistency in the flags. They have six colors, they have stripes, and the gay community has over 30-plus flags. That may be something new that we find out right now. Realize there's no consistency because there is no political party, there's no head of it, there's no membership, I can't find a guitar, I can't pay my dues. That's not a thing to view. The flag has different meanings. The red means is for life, it's for embracing that you're here, that you're alive, and that is a good thing. Orange is for, is for health, is to focus on yourself and realize you have been in a lot of bruises and you need to heal. Yellow is for the embrace joy when it happens, green is nature, that's the reason that you're here, you're part of this world, you are not alienated to it no matter what anyone says. Blue is for, this is for harmony, not causing harm in the area that you are and violent is for spirit, is for the strength to move on in any type of oppression. So the purpose of the board education is to support the children's education, is not the policies enacted by the board have to be harm-free. We know that LGBTQ students are a minority group and feel safe and valued and they can be engaged in education when they're supported. That's what we're trying to go to. What I'm trying to ask is that the policy decision defines that the pride flag or pride paraphernalia, if we will, is based on identity, it's not a belief, it's not a political party, it's nothing else in there too. So what we're trying to say is that it is separate from the policy that was enacted. We're not looking for every teacher to fly a flag. We're asking for their previous flags, just so you can re-insign it and let's just go back to where it was before that decision was made. The very act of removing the flags and reclassifying them as political symbol can be seen as an act of discrimination and kind of mining the education moments of 1972.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
I unfortunately don't have any telephilely prepared speeches. Came down here as a parent, a dumb truck driver in the community. And it just seems to me that this parade left the station a long, long time ago. Ten years ago, I was in school. I had teachers hanging pride flags under doors indicating students that it was a safe place for them to go. As a parent of students who will be going to this district, I would appreciate if the district would get back in that train car, take a seat, and support the students that they have. And that's all I got.
Good evening. Thank you all for having us today. So I've spoken to a couple of you privately before this meeting, and I was telling you I was having a hard time writing this speech. I wrote a number of speeches to read before you today and discarded each one of them for one reason or another. So let me tell you why. The first one was going to be based on facts and statistics. It was going to just be filled with everything you couldn't deny. It was going, it was a claim to me that the issue concerning the after-school club was that it was led by teachers and not parents, which goes against the policies that all the after-school clubs have to adhere to. Examples included Rock and Roll, and literally we'll get into. I gave this some thought and was really confused as my sons have been involved in a number of after-school clubs, all of them were led by teachers, mathletes, quiz goals, science enthusiasts, as well as a white SO soccer coaches numerous over the years. I was going to go into great catch-all details about the LGBTQ+ community, but the facts didn't sway their thoughts for our COVID-19 policies, so I didn't think they'd work today either. My second letter, it was emotional. In regards to all the students that saw this flag get taken down, you've sent a clear message to them if their sexuality is not okay at Free Rivers Community Schools, and they should go bat inch to closet where you put their flag. As well as the embarrassment brought into this community and how it will survive for quite some time, as anyone who does an online search for Free Rivers Michigan will forever be able to see how close-minded our schools are. How teachers have endured enough in the last couple of years of COVID and you're still lacking support for just one of them due to one or two outside sources complaints is appalling, but figure that when we're healing, because the need of reaction to the flag was so quick that clearly emotion wasn't going to work today either. My third one, it was more about what would work. And what I came up with was that you guys are scared of the one or two outside threat. The mayor, Free Rivers, Tom Lowry, and I got together with a number of people in this room. We will approach ACLU because we will sue, do the lawsuit instead. I do realize, as a board, you're trying to diminish the one or two outside complaints and try to be as harmless as possible, but that's not always going to work. Sometimes you have to take a stand and be a leader. Being gay is how we force this board. It should be supported unconditionally. Any opinions against the LGBTQ community is based on a political or religious opinion and should not be considered inside of school ever. What has always seemed to work, which weighed this board in the past, is numbers and loudness. So I hope that with all my heart, that the numbers here today and the voices outside match.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And I do want to say that I appreciate the sincerity and the passion that everybody is expressing here. I think that's important. I just want to go on to say here, I don't believe that a trans group belongs in school for several different reasons. I'm going to start with this. We're endowed by our, okay, we're endowed by our creator of certain unalienable rights. Among them is life, okay? And God created a male and a female. Gender is part of what defines a child's identity and makeup in preparation for adulthood. It's one of God's primary gifts to a child and it's one of a child's primary gift to a pastor. To have an LGBT trans group and a flag that belong and they can't be counterproductive to the child, it reinforces to them that they are wrong. No, wait, I got interrupted. I'm going to start over. This is a hate speech? Well, I am a Christian, I'm a pastor. I just got off the phone two nights ago with a gay married woman, and she asked me to please make sure that her child's wisdom state is taken care of. She says, "Past Jerry, please take care of her." So, hey, here's the deal, okay? Listen to me. Nobody is a mistake. These groups are reinforcing that these children are, must not be cut out here. Okay. Okay, am I done?
We now have closed session. That was the last public comment.
That wasn't a public comment.
The board is now going to a closed session. We need to have a vote to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into a closed session.
Make a motion.
For elementary music at Morton and Andrews. So she's going to tell us a little bit about our student, are you hired?
Hey there. Carly Curley is our new music teacher for Andrews and Morton. She has experience as a former music therapist. I'm so tired, this is not working very well for me. And she starts January 3rd. She's a runner, but that did not influence my decision anyway. We, we identified them together on tech. It's amazing. And I think that's about it. And for the past interim, we've had this Krista Vandemai as our locktard sub, and she's done a fabulous job for both of our schools. And our concert is on Wednesday night, and you should come. And it's at 6:30, and it won't take that long, and you'll enjoy it.
Thanks, Dan. Carly's tired because I consented to the agenda when we get to the afternoon. So the next thing is the transportation update. Mr. Brian Leonard is going to help us with that one, but we too have a shortage with our bus drivers and also with our illnesses. So we're going to have to do some tweaks, so we're going to talk about that with you to kind of get everybody in the know of where we're at with that situation. So Mr. Leonard.
Thank you. So as Nikki mentioned, due to driver shortage, illnesses in the district, we had to cancel some routes, as I'm sure you all are aware, including notifications. Since it's evident that there are going to be, there's going to be a need to continue Kansas bus routes on occasion due to driver shortage, the illnesses, transportation department, myself and... the transportation department, myself, and Andrew Suberth and the Nashport Dr. Fran, that we would like to implement that will allow us to plan ahead, if you will, and also pre-identify some parents that could be impacted by route cancellation. We've looked at all the different strategies that have been employed around us in different districts. What we actually came up with, including those to the Kenyan routine, they actually came up with this strategy as an extension. We'll use our original plan as a springboard and continue some further ideas that would maybe actually add into cancel complete routes of their entirety and move to a, what we would call a scheduled two-hour delay of certain routes. This way it increases keeping our students in the classroom while they are further in their due time. At least getting to school in every day at all possible. And will also help alleviate some of the complications with full route cancellations. It will cause delays and drop-offs because we will actually reschedule post-homeland with certain routes. So those parents could be notified at that time so that they have a chance to plan in advance. For these types of things, the opportunity for self-transituation is always an option available too. If parents choose so instead to do that. So I've actually left you guys a pathway at this point in time. The actual routes that are identified on the action sheet you have, as we continue to try to evaluate the most effectively through this. Those may actually tweak or change tomorrow. We have more revision to do on logistical analysis. But that's the concept, is entirely representative to you. You will note that two routes were identified as impacted. The intention was, such as today, we had a single route cancellation this morning, about an hour in the morning. And then we also had a second route cancellation. So we figured it would be wise to plan accordingly for at least two potential cancellations on a regular basis. That's what's going on. So the seemingly answer, what we're looking for is just based on that and the information provided to you that we had, your lesson you've seen down this path. And as other plans and opportunities may become available to us, of course, in the future, those accordingly argue with the respective update and alternate plan in this place to try to turn this factor into a violation.
Thank you, Bethany. I just have one suggestion or a comment. On my way here this evening, I was behind the stage of coming transportation authority bus with the railroad tracks. And I noticed on the back it says, you know, all riders or, you know, that everybody can use it. And I just wondered if somebody calls the bus drivers, if that would be an option to at least like route them to them or, you know, if they're in a desperate situation, they might be able to use that as a, if they don't have any other way, it could at least get the student to school.
We can actually, yeah, we can actually do that if you provide some information. I guess we'll call it the ease to alternate transportation that may be available to parents who wish that at that time to search and to be able to.
Yeah, it's a county program, and I think it's a great way for the school to work with them. And like I said, I saw it on my way here this evening. And I know in the past I've seen students get, I just had, I was under the impression years ago it was like a certain age or certain, new certain people. And at least being able to get them the number, I think would be a great opportunity to at least continue, like you said, getting people in school. So good job from the delay part, but I just thought I'd, I just saw it tonight and thought I would have served.
Yeah, it's unfortunate we had this. A little more time, a couple of days, we hope, because we just have these guys prior to what's been transpired the last couple of days, but, you know, talking about.
Hey Brian, look at how many times the parents got.
So if we're able to move forward, we actually finalize route selections tomorrow again based on logistics, which will be the most effective mitigating the impact across the whole span of all of our bus and routes. We will put notifications out in short order. I mean by that is by the end tomorrow or the next day, once those listings are finalized, they'll be directing the parents to get the plans in place by the beginning of next week. If it's actually to try to start right at the beginning of next week, if necessary. Again, it's all contingent on whether or not we have people out of illness or whether, whatever the case may be, we do have currently enough riders to buy transportation to our students. The problem is, is when they start showing symptoms, they have to be isolated, you know, or, sorry, not isolated. Close contacts. If they have to go into the tank, that's where I look for. Or actual just regular illnesses that are transpired right now, then we have to take the plans in action to try to attend to that.
So at least 24 hours?
Oh, absolutely. Okay, I think it's 72 hours I need to do over this week. So that way for next week, they have a few days left to begin and try to look at some rate. That's our contingent time. This is all contingent on the parents coming together in their sense of next week.
And if we put up a notice of the other day, we will get the information out with families as soon as we know. Because we do have last-minute calls for families that may be ill that we have to do in the morning. We don't, we're not seeing that, but those are the versions of our custom right now.
Yeah, the cancellation, the transpire, the second year, we called that fight. Yeah, that cancellation was preventative, sampling. We knew in advance the cancellation would extend beyond just the PM route. So we went ahead and implemented that notification according to the duration of the week. That directly might be returning for a minimum of 72 uncontrollable hours.
Anyone want some flying bus driver? The easiest way to go about that is to visit one, call the transportation department. We'd be glad to have a conversation with you right now. We'll help you out. So, yeah.
And we are working on suppliers to try to get them to work on their own design because it's like ourself situation where we're gonna be advocating to try to get those on present.
Yeah, the district panel is already supported. I think this was my previous meeting a year or two ago. We had to support some internal employee opportunities. Try to purge internal employees that were looking for something to supplement and help offset some of the strain that was on by transportation and whatnot. And moved to my zone where these people are extremely frustrated and realizing that they're simply capped and working with us to try to accommodate, you know, their athletic transportation and errors of the athletic students.
Hey, Kenny. I just have one more thing for working that. Please for the transportation, I was sent a certificate, I know this early November. It's a certificate of excellence from the Michigan State Police for our transportation department for achieving a pass rate of 95% or higher for the school bus safety measure. So those two got my penny and your team. So I'll be giving this to you later, so congratulations.
Moving on to our second reading of our policy update. The following policies are up for second reading tonight. Bylaw 100 definitions, bylaw 1067.3, public participation at board meetings, policy 3120, employment of professional staff, policy 6114, cost of principal spending, federal funds, policy 6152, student fees, finance supplies, policy 7450, property inventory, policy 8310, public records, policy 8320, personnel files, policy 8330, student records. Any comments or questions on those policies?
Mary Anna, any motion to approve? Number four. Roll call, three.
Nicole Hoover.
Yes.
Kevin Hamilton.
Yes.
Ben Harley.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Melissa Bliss.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes. Motion passed at 72. I'm totally stuck on two of the actions. So number, backtrack, two consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda this night?
Mary Anna, any motion to approve? Number four. Roll call, three.
Kevin Hamilton. Yeah. Ben Harley.
Yes.
Julia Ah.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Elizabeth. Nicole Hoover.
Yes.
Aaron Noah.
Yes. Motion passed at 72. All right, we're already voted on our policy. You voted. I'm not saying that. We just, same ones. I'm sorry. That's okay. All right, up next is our second call for public comment. So again, as a reminder, there will be a three-minute time limit on your comments. Mr. Carlin will call you up if you're cleared to speak. We have the two microphones. Comments, you two kept our Scott quote and.
Eric Fletcher. That's what? Michael Lego. Good to meet Michael Lego. Tonight, our best of work, the squeaky wheels were organizing here tonight. I don't feel that there was nearly majority of our district. And I expect the board to acknowledge what the school system and what the district majority is looking at, that they don't support what they claim as a non-political stance on flags. I'm not here to promote my flag. We get into that every quiet. But my stance is that the board keeps neutral and just goes right through the district and not especially just. That's all I had for tonight. I said, I know that the majority of the district has a different view. And just a comment, a lady here that walked by me in her covered drink tonight. She smelled of old men. I kind of resemble that remark. Thank you.
Brenda Doe.
Good evening. First of all, I want to just thank you in watching the comments and listening earlier, the intention that you had in listening to everybody's thoughts and their concerns. I very much appreciate that. I am pastor at the First Presbyterian Church in Three Rivers. And I just want to mention that, that, you know, when people want to introduce religion or their faith into any public arena, you cannot simplify God and reduce God to a few simple, salaried scriptures that you want to put forth to support your position. Scripture is never meant to be a weapon that would be cherry-picked outside of the context and historical time that it was written and the language in which it was written. You cannot do that and apply it to today. It takes more effort and more studying in order to do that. That said, in scripture, scripture never, ever calls out anybody's sexual identity as sinful. Ever. So that cannot be used as a weapon, especially in a public arena, especially when you have the public task of educating all children. All children who are created by God and created good. As far as the flag goes, all flags are not equivalent. You can have a political flag, because that's a choice that you make, your political variation. You can have your Christian flag, but that's because you choose to be a Christian. What the pride flag is, is a symbol of somebody's identity that they cannot choose. They don't choose that. They don't wake up one day and decide that they're gonna be something else. And so what it is for children, for youth who are so vulnerable and at a fragile point in their life, where they're looking for support and help from the people that they respect and have been trusted, they're cared to, they need that visible symbolic assurance that yes, I can walk into this room and I can feel good because I'm safe and somebody will want to hear me. That said, I hope that you know and you understand the power and the influence that you have in these children's lives. You've heard the stories from young people themselves. You've heard the stories from young adults who have suffered and have suffered emotional and psychological pain. And so tonight, I just wanted to say that I pray, I pray that you have the courage and that you have the strength to be the advocate for the most vulnerable people in our society. People who are being formed, young people who are at risk.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Kate Baummanberger.
I hesitate to get on the talk after that. But on a similar note, again, I identified myself as a person of the effects of Christian earlier and a person who holds his beliefs very strongly. But that's held in the context that that's a choice to be a Christian and to hold any particular religious belief or whatever. However strongly that you identify that is a choice. And we use that word identity in the context of religion as that person's identity. But the identity of someone's gender or their sexual orientation is a different use of that word identity. It's not a choice. It's how people are born and it's who they are. But I think it's important to name that, that word identity has been used in two different contexts. And in the same place, despite my personal faith, that doesn't have a place in a public context. It doesn't, it shouldn't be the defining feature of a public. A public space needs to be free from that personal faith or symbols that push that faith on the larger community. And I also just want to say that I don't see this as a zero-sum game between Christianity or Christian faith or religious faith and the broader context, concept, and inclusion of a full spectrum of who we are as people. So yeah, again, I thank you all for all the work you do.
Kate McCurran. Samantha. Samantha Modoff. Adriana Caceres.
So, excuse me, I'm sorry. More than sorry. I came here today mainly because I had a really bad incident on the buses. And I'm kind of left shaken, my son was left shaken. And after certain things happened and not feeling comfortable with the fact of, you know, I went to the community, I made a post, and I had received a lot of messages in response to that. The student question has been an impression before to a four-year-old child. So what happened was my son was on the bus, and he said he did not like Fortnite. And the child hit my son in the face and dislodged a tooth. You know, so I had to take him to the dentist. So now I'm sitting here just not understanding why it has not had more swift action. I remember being young, and if there was kids that got in a fight, they'd be suspended. You know, but nothing has been done. I don't know if I have the right to see the video or, you know, or anything like that. And I guess my main, my main objective now is to try to see, you know, obviously, we hear that we have problems with buses, and I understand that. I mean, there's police and then there's upset parents, you know, that want to know why this is happening, why it's so bad. So, I mean, is there anything we can do? What can I do as to, I mean, even if we can get people hired or parents to come in there, just any kind of aid or something done where there is a lot more, more action done towards. towards bullying, where there's zero tolerance? Because we say there's zero tolerance, but I do not see that. So, that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
Keen Robb. Kevin Hobbs. Oh, okay. Hey, right over there. It's the last public comment.
All right. First, the decision that was made before regarding the flag was made for a reason. And I actually, when you said that you'd come back and have a discussion regarding the pride flag, I kind of expected a discussion, but instead, all the decisions and all the discussions took place in private, so we don't have any idea of the before as to why the decision was made to begin with and then why the next decision was made to change it back. I'm worried it's not because of threats of lawsuits, because there's lawsuits all the time. And the only other comment that I'm going to make is, and this is really more to the mob, it looks like they're going out, but it was all about safety and kids being able to feel safe in their school and in their rooms based on their identity. And yet, I'm curious as to if there was anyone else other than me that didn't feel safe when all the mobs started to react. I mean, even the board decided to change their agenda at the stage, you know, the agenda had to do with the superintendent's report before you left. And so rather than doing what you said you would do and stopping the discussion and continuing on with the agenda, you left and didn't do the superintendent's report and then came back and then didn't discuss just when I'm with a change. So I'll be interested to know how it continues. So that's it.
Okay. So our upcoming board calendar, on December 13th will be our Board of Education Work Session. And December 20th through the 31st will be our winter break. On January 17th, we will reconvene for the Board of Education organizational meeting and we will set our calendar for 2022 at that time as well as election officers. Anything I've missed on the board calendar? I'll open the floor next for board member comment. I can actually get mine up low here first. So this update on the superintendent search, starting in January, probably the meeting after the organizational meeting, I will have some information for us regarding some different search firms that have approached me about completing the search for the new superintendent. We'll have the conversation at that time, how we want to proceed with the superintendent search, whether it's through a search party or if the district wants to do a independent search at that time. We will set the plan for getting feedback from staff and the community of what we want to see in our new superintendent and hopefully post for that job at the beginning of February with the hope of completing interviews by late March, early April, and then seeing a new superintendent July first. Any comments or questions on that? And if anybody has had, I know we've used MASC in the past and I've got the name of just a couple other firms that have been in the past, certainly like the Superintendent Two or getting information on, please let me know or give any information to the beginning of January 17th meeting. That's all I have. Any other board member comment?
I have a couple. And I know we can't go back, but I was wondering in the future, when we maybe have sent it out, can we, if we have an issue or we can send it in the lightness of the eye, if we can have it under the actual action item, if we did have a question about bond invoices? And so then I see the second page and realize, oh, I had a question about that. We look if you can then... Oh, okay. So I was just wondering if we can have this, you know, if we have this again, if we can have this under the actual action item, so it's less... So the second page. I have not...
I think what he's saying is we need an actual agenda under consent, not as a second section. And then go on to each agenda item.
No.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, how, I know what you're talking about. So just more like that. He's bolded an item, it'll be just like I was bolded, he was bolded a step, those bolded under consent.
Yep. And then the other part that I thought I'd make, but coming out, it's been a long night. You all expressed your concern and I'm going to, my concern, and this is my feeling, I personally support and have been in support of pride flag. So I really appreciate you guys coming out and both sides and, you know, expressing your concerns either way.
Any other board member?
Yeah. Wanted to come in and look at the discussions tonight and then a lot of our audiences left, particularly the young people, which I'll learn next little more and it has been a long night, but crack at a few words just to try to show some support. And now I have to clean them up, so I'll come, but that's okay. Hopefully, the message is out there. So as Kevin said, thank you so much for everybody that did stick with us till the end. This has been a long night and certainly some challenges along the way and... But so many resources shared the past couple of weeks, concerns, emails, et cetera. Appreciate all of that feedback and it's really been a trying time for the community. To be clear, right, like Kevin, I unequivocally support pride flag being put up in schools. I unequivocally support GSA at the high school, at the middle school, and really any efforts we can make to support our, all of our students and particularly those that are at risk and marginalized. I stand by Superintendent Nash, this has been one heck of a six weeks that she's had as interim superintendent. Superintendent Nash, many years and always been impressed with her ability to be student-centered. So I know for her, this is a big focus work. We love the community, as we all do. I'm not glad that this incident happened, but I sure am glad to talk about it now instead of after a tragedy. And we've heard from so many amazing people. Again, tonight, we heard a lot of voices and thoughts on this issue. The resounding theme that I knew is about people's rights and about safety. And I've had friends that were hurt by this incident, family, and a lot of people reaching out about it. We were, and we have the opportunity here to help heal better. At the very least, I think we can all agree to not cause harm. And those are the right directions that create spaces for conversation, to create the community that we all want to live in, that we do choose to live in. I thought deeply about what to say tonight and what to do, what to wear, how to put out a pencil symbol and also being open to various viewpoints. Ultimately, our microphones and our votes are what we have control over right now. Sure, we're going to be working on the policy and that's work that will take time and we appreciate the feedback there. So like somebody said earlier, I wrote some words and then I had to edit those because we've blurred a lot of other incidents of hate that we felt within our district. And then a couple days later, something happened in Vicksburg, very similar. And then a couple days later, there was a school shooting two and a half hours away. And then today, we had a threat at our high school. So how do we talk about safety and some of these core issues without addressing some of these bigger, bigger challenges that we're faced with there? I mean, it's not just related to the school. So how find the words to convey that? I don't know. But late last night, I was looking at our agenda and I noticed the bullet points at the bottom of the agenda that we all have talked about along. And that really says it better than any of us could, because it hits on those points so directly about inclusion and viewpoints and common good that we hopefully all share. There are a few in our communities nationwide who choose hatred, who choose division, and in many ways, have succeeded in sowing division. I'm optimistic that this can be a turning point towards healing, because that's not the TR that we are, you know, that's one of our common cheers. So I'm going to stick with that for a second, but perhaps as an unintended consequence of some of the hatred, bigotry, division that has happened in our country, it has mobilized and motivated and inspired a far greater force than any school board, and that is our young people. And I wish they were still here, but maybe they'll listen someday. But being an ally is lifelong work. Our young people have voices. Their voices are loud, their voices are persistent, and their voices are real. And so any young people listening or reading to anything that we had to say, I see you for who you are, I accept you for who you are, find your place in activism, don't give up, because that's the TR that we are. And I know we can be better and move forward. So thank you all for being here tonight and continue moving in the right direction.
One that clarified, I can't remember the question that you have at the end, but that Nikki acted in a manner that we approve of, we believe. We sought out the advice from our attorney before making a decision. I think that was the right decision. I do feel comfortable with the board's decision and my position was to help gaslight the flex to return. And part of that is based on the fact that the pride flags were the only ones that come down. My initial assumption was that all displays were required to come down, but that's not what happened. So I do believe in letting those slides return until a policy has been adopted. And I do believe in due diligence, so not necessarily being reactive to the situation, but making sure that we take the time to gather the data, communicate the event, and to make a well-enormed decision and giving the community as a whole an opportunity to speak on this topic. Decisions like this can't just be made overnight. So I am very proud of the board for taking into consideration what I have to say and then working together as a group to come back to where we're at now.
Pride flag, it's about saving lives to me. Everyone, a lot of discussions about it. It has literally saved lives when people see these types of symbols and so for no other reason. That's why I advocate a transition.
Well, I guess I would say thank you to all who stuck it up to the end. We appreciate all the comments we got tonight. I think this whole question has resulted in probably a larger conversation about how to go forward with safety and diversity and perspective in school and adhering to our values statement and our outcomes in the community line of the app. So we're going to be working very hard on that over the next few months and I, like what was said, this doesn't happen overnight, policy changes rather slow, but it should be that way. It should be deliberate and considered and that's what we intend to do. So I'd like to have a chance to really have some brainstorming with the community and look forward to finding a good way forward. And I think we're right to ask, and we appreciate you, your leadership and Erin's leadership and the rest of the board.
Everybody that does seems like, oh, look at my background. Obviously, I'm the newest member of the board. filled those spots, haven't been around very long, but one thing that doesn't change is that I was born and raised in Three Rivers and I went to school here. And we have a really caring, very humble, come from all walks of life. We literally have a little bit of everything here. I think what we saw tonight is perception and realities. This was the first night and that's why unfortunately you had to sit here so long. This didn't get discussed prior to tonight. You know, we just had to make a decision legally to kind of just pause everything until we could do our diligence and figure out what happened. And so contrary to popular opinion, that became tonight. So I think what we recognize and what I recognize as a member with children in the school district is that if you don't have a policy that addresses something, you can't really decide with squeaky wheels or soft wheels or quiet wheels. What we have to do is we have to work with you as a community, not just tonight, but you need to tell your friends and your neighbors and everybody that has the test skin in the game that we have to work on this policy and we need community input, not just tonight. We can yell at our neighbors. And it was going so well, and so it was super disappointing to see that we had it end like we did because we really had a lot of good work. Jamie, I don't know if he's still here, I really liked his quote that he started out with, like, hey, we can all have opinions. But what needs to happen is we have to work on this policy beyond tonight. It can't just be a seven-member board, it can't just be the superintendent. We need your input, we need to look at it. A classroom display policy is needed, and so we need to figure out how we will move forward. And it needs to be people that live here, that have children here, that have skin in the game, that really want to make sure that we, as your board, hear your inputs. And I make that challenge to you and we will listen to you and we will move forward. But it can't just be nights like tonight, it has to be everybody involved so that we can move forward with that policy. And so by not getting a policy, this is a situation we've been into. And so we appreciate both sides, we appreciate everything that happened. I think it's real easy for somebody to come and make public comment that we missed an agenda item or we did something odd or sequence, but let's not forget, we're human and, you know, we don't want to see that and we don't want to hear that. And it's very alarming when things happen with that. So we didn't do it intentionally, but it's okay to stand up and say what we're doing right every once in a while, too. You know, we're working hard and I'll be the first board member to tell you, hey, if I screw up, I'll screw up, but nobody has a bigger heart than the people that are here working for you. So thank you.
Can I just, can I take a moment and thank all of you tonight for coming, for sticking with us, not just for the hours tonight, but for the process that it's been over the last couple of weeks? When people approached me or emailed me, I'm being sure to tell them that this is an ongoing situation, this is an ongoing conversation that the Board of Education is going to continue having. And like Mrs. Cobra referenced, it doesn't end tonight. The conversations will continue to happen, the policies will continue to be developed. No matter how proactive we try to be with anticipating things that will happen, there are times that situations occur and we have to be reactive to them. And unfortunately, that came with a lack of a policy in this situation. But as we always do, the seven of us work together with Mrs. Nash to try to continue the district forward and do the best for our students, our staff, and our community. So again, we just thank you for coming tonight. And that I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So, Florida. Paul Oliver. Ben Harley.
Yes.
Julia Ahn.
Yes.
Linda Baker.
Yes.
Elizabeth Blit.
Yes.
Nicole Hofer.
Yes.
Kevin Hamilton.
Yes.
Erin Noah.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.